Call meeting of the Mecklenburg County Atlantic Commission, please stand as we do our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now going to public hearing. First item on our agenda tonight is application. Mecklenburg County has received application by James Moody to rezone from industrial M1 to business B1 to allow for adult daycare business. Uh, this property is zoned as industrial M1, is located on the east side of Sawmill Road. And it is approximately six hundred and twenty-two feet north of its intersection with Route 722, Novel Farm Road. This is in election district one. Is the applicant here to speak? Please come, come forward, state your name.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'm here with my, uh, my granddaughter, wherever she's at, back here, Katie, Katie Moody. Uh, we own the property at Sawmill Road, seventy-one Sawmill Road. It's the old Morgan Lumber Company. Uh, my company is Veterans Enterprise Technology Solutions. We go by Vets Inc. Probably seen us, we're down on Commerce Drive, down by the new Microsoft. And what we, what we do at the warehouse is primarily use it for storage, uh, for our equipment and, and excess furniture. Pretty good sized warehouse, but we have, I think it's around fifteen acres of property. And Katie wants to start a doggy daycare there, doing about ten to fifteen dogs just during the day. So we bought a trailer, put it on there, on the cement that's there, and got it surveyed so that I could divide it off by an acre, uh, to put the facility on. The neighbors I've talked to all seem to be okay with it, uh, primarily during the daytime. So, hope, uh, you guys will concur with us and you have any questions on it?
And you, you currently use it as your warehouse now, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you have traffic coming there now as it is?
We have some traffic coming there now. Yeah, my, we, we have an electrical division, electrical and air conditioning division that, uh, we've kind of not shut down, but slowed down because it's so hard to find good employees. But my, my son-in-law is an electrician by trade and, uh, one of, one of my partners is a HVAC guy. So we do a little bit of work out of there still on that, but it's, it's tatered down. Usually not anybody there.
Ten to fifteen dogs?
I'm sorry?
Ten to fifteen animal?
Ten to fifteen animals is what she's planning.
Just, just during the day, not overnighting them?
Just during the day. Yeah, she, she wants to do it. She's got a twelve-year-old, my great-granddaughter, twelve-year-old. So she wants to be able to do it and stay home, get home in time with, you know, the twelve-year-olds and not have to hire too many employees. Hopefully just her, but.
So you don't think it'd grow to twenty-five, thirty dogs or nothing like that?
Be nice if it did, but we don't plan it that way. You know, we're not going to build it that way. The plan is that we put a, uh, I think it's forty-eight foot, uh, pre-built that, that I bought from one of the shed companies. Got electric in it already, haven't hooked it up, but, but it's got electric. Uh, we'll put sewer and water in, it already got water. We'll put the sewer in, got the permit for that. And use that for the, you know, doing trimming, dog, dog trimming. She's got to learn how to do that part yet, but do that part inside, have an inside area for them and then have little doggy doors that they can go out and have little runs for each, uh, each door. Uh, so it really can't do more than ten or fifteen, uh, dogs. I mean, some owners are going to want their dogs to be in the same run, but most are going to be independent.
I just curious, does, does it help the problem, anything, um, come by and check that or something with the SBC and all that they come by, you know, pretty regularly, check it? So do they monitor that?
When I went and talked to them, they, they told me all they needed was the permit for the sewer. The, 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 the doggy daycare wasn't regulated, so I'd assume that's right, but.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other question? Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all. Josh. Get anyone. No one else has signed up to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
And no other calls or letters, right?
No.
Okay. All right, this is in election district, uh, one. Uh, any discussion? Do I hear a motion on this application?
Who's district one?
District one.
District one. I make a motion for, to approve according to the recommendations. The rezoning of the property to business D1 would offer more opportunities for business to be located on the property. The developer must meet VDOT standards for commercial entrance. The developer would have to develop the property with the business B1 zoning ordinance. Rezoning the property would possibly provide a needed service for dog care, uh, se- daycare center. This, the structure that is utilized for the, uh, they, they went away.
Went to sleep on him. I'll finish it for you.
Go ahead, please, because.
The structure is utilized for the dog daycare center will be required to meet building codes for this type of use.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Watson. All is a paper, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. All right, uh, next item on our agenda, the Mecklenburg County zoning office has received an application by Dave Height to rezone two parcels from agriculture to industrial M1 to allow for a concrete ready-mix plant with, uh, supporting office, uh, admix bins areas and, uh, material storage areas. Uh, this property is on agriculture, is located up on the north side of Highway ninety-two and at its approximately four miles southeast of its intersection with Edmunds Road, election district seven. Is the applicant here to speak for this application?
Good evening. My name is Gerald Hooton and I'm with B and B Consultants. I'm the civil engineer for this project. And both the applicant, Mr. David Height, and actually, uh, Robert Ellie with Commercial Ready Products are here as well. This project is for the rezoning of plus or minus three acres of the property itself to include a construction entrance, parking lot, small office building, like we said. Sand and, uh, aggregate storage bins, above-ground containers for both, uh, water and admixtures, two concrete-lined sediment basins, and also concrete washout pits, some sump racks, and a stormwater management basin. This property actually is only, I'm going to refer right here, we're only rezoning three acres, plus or minus three acres on the actual property, so.
Yeah, you best to turn it back this way. We the ones who make the decision.
I just didn't want it not to include the.
Correct.
So the rezoning is for the plus or minus three acres itself. It would not include the overall two parent parcels. So this portion of the property would remain agricultural. The smaller parcel that is up front would remain agricultural as well. The intent, when the pro- after the zoning passes, rezoning passes, if, when planted, we would have actually established agricultural, one of the parcel up front, probably on Highway ninety-two. There would be a fifty-foot buffer between the existing residence, that's right there. So that would, uh, this parent parcel, parcel over here that's the larger one, the twenty-two acres, is actually landlocked currently. And this fifty-foot access right here would actually allow them to have roadway access. So again, we're not locating, we're not rezoning the entirety, we're just rezoning three acres. I'd like to also point out that the commercial entrance is staying on the main two parcels, parent parcel. It's located as far away from the existing, um, resident here on Highway ninety-two as possible. Stay on this, uh, parent parcel. This project, um, is going to, um, if construction plans are done, is actually constructed, this project will actually maintain a Virginia Pollution Discharge Eliminations Permit, which actually handles both air, uh, air quality and water quality for processed water. That is actually monitored, um, throughout the life of the project, uh, by DEQ. This project will also, you know, if it's constructed to, um, will have a Virginia Stormwater Management Permit for any, it's, it'll be over an acre disturbance. So it's going to be required to have Virginia Stormwater Management Permit. CRMP actually employs, uh, dust suppression activities, including the water trucks and sprayers, uh, that make it adhere to the, uh, DEQ actual water quality standards. They have, uh, other items also in the silo that actually prevent, uh, the concrete itself from leaving, the concrete product itself. Processed water is contained and will be contained in two concrete-lined sediment settling basins, which is tested quarterly and reported to DEQ quarterly for both pH, total suspended solids, oils and fuels and et cetera as well. Um, stormwater discharge is actually, will be handled and monitored by DEQ as well, but it's actually, uh, annual, um, annual reporting. Uh, if you haven't been to the site yet, the, um, it was recently cleared several years ago. So you have, um, uh, it's been planted in pines and they're starting to grow back. And it's the intent of the developer to maintain as many of those planted pines as possible to date. Part of the, uh, sound mitigation that is going to be employed, um, should this project go to fruition, is establishing a buffer from between the actual concrete plant and entrance from the, um, existing residence. The nearest property line is a hundred and fifty feet. That's a diagonal. That's to the property line, not the actual residence itself. There's also, um, actually out front, there's two hundred feet, uh, minimum between the property line on the existing residence itself as well. This, this project does not intend to impact any wetlands or waters of the U.S. during construction. That, you know, just not feasibly to do it and economically to do it. Stormwater, uh, for this project runs off to the Roanoke River, so it goes to the Aubrey Marl, Aubrey Marl Sound Basin in, um, in North Carolina. If the rezoning passes, um, construction plans for this facility, they have to go through Mecklenburg County, so you have to have a site plan. You have to have, um, VDOT comments addressed, county comments addressed, and the, uh, Lake Country Soil and Water Board as well. So that's erosion and sediment control. DEQ's part of that, DEQ stormwater's part of that review as well. And that would be for, during the release of the actual, um, land disturbance permit. As for tra- as for traffic, there would be a, uh, slight increase in traffic on the Highway ninety-two because you've got vehicles coming in and out. But the, this road itself, um, is on the same route as the landfill just north of this site. So the highways are actually, you know, they're built for all that traffic. That's all I have for this evening, but, uh, I'm happy to entertain any questions if you have any.
We, we approved a cement plan, I think, up on ninety-two on Airport Road.
Airport Road.
Road, and I think that cement was used, uh, a little different cement that was used for Microsoft. Is this something similar? Is this going to be open to the public to buy cement and all from this place?
I believe it's primarily, this is a relocation of the facility at Microsoft over to here because there's, there's no more room for it there. Is that correct, Robert? Is a relocation of the existing facility on Microsoft property current, currently?
Yes, and we will, uh, it will be used, uh, we can use it for both, both, uh, local as well as Microsoft.
But Microsoft primary, probably.
Correct.
They take first dibs, right?
Yeah. And, uh, one thing I did forget to mention is normal operating hours between seven AM and, and six PM. You know, last truck's coming in at six PM.
About noise, far as rock dropping and stuff where that affected the people living around it, the noise?
So this project, if you can see on the map, we're, we're locating as far back as possible to maintain just the three acre, three acre footprint is what's needed. So that's why we've elongated the entrance and pushed it back. So the intent is to actually, um, let the trees grow and provide the space so we can provide any sound abatement, you know?
And all of that twenty-acre parcel there, that's in pines now? Is that correct?
Yes. Replanted in pines is correct.
Okay, so that gives it some sound barrier too?
Yes, sir. And again, the intent is not to just go in and, you know, get them all up. It's just to clear and disturb what's necessary to install the facility. Again, up front, uh, this parcel, whether it's open, you still have all these pines out here and then there'll also be a fifty-foot swath.
So anyway, when the pine get upside, it will not be visible from highway, but other than down the driveway.
Sure. I mean, you never know. Uh, no, most likely no.
Ma'am, ma'am. You have to get your time there in just a minute. And how far, about how far is it from the driveway to their house, that first house?
It's over, it's over two hundred and fifty feet to their house, uh, from the, the perpendicular distance?
Mm-hmm, I, I, I see it on here.
Yeah. This distance itself, perpendicular to the property line is a hundred and fifty feet, so it's double that distance, but, you know, two seventy-five or so. And it should be noted that there is actually all already existing tree line there, full grown pine.
Fifty feet, nothing.
Some sound abatement.
Okay.
Fifty feet is nothing.
No, that's just the.
Yeah, right.
Driveway. It's a hundred, it's two hundred feet total to the house from the entrance.
We've, we've, we've thought about it and provided, tried to provide as much voluntary buffer as possible. You know, thinking about the existing residents to push it back as much as, as possible.
That fifty-foot is just the parcel access, correct, to the new, new parcel?
Yes, sir. That, the larger parcel in the back, if you look at it on GIS, is actually landlocked today.
Okay.
So we're providing access to it.
Okay.
You mentioned the noise factor. Is that within a workout from eight to? You didn't give us the time on the noise, when they'd be operating?
You're operating from what, seven AM?
Seven AM to six PM. And six PM would be more like the trucks coming in from a, a five PM or five-thirty PM, um, pour, coming in. So they won't be loading, you know, at that time, but you, you could still have a truck coming in.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Could you just leave that turn towards the, uh?
Yes.
For them, let's see. Next to speak?
Robert Ely-Alay? Would, would you like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Robert Ely with Commercial Ready Mix. The reason we're doing this is because we're trying to get it off of Microsoft's site. Uh, we have been sitting there for three years now. And, uh, we need to get it off, uh, so we have, I would say, more control over our plant. Uh, we do, do local people right now. We do furnish people around when they do call. We take the order and we carry it out. Uh, being on Microsoft's property, they, uh, kind of frown on us using it for other people. But, um, we, we want to be a good neighbor. We want to do local as well as them. It's a lot of times, uh, the plant for Microsoft, we have set as much as seven months and never moved a truck off that site, uh, waiting on them to start another building, which y'all are familiar with. So this would help us financially be able to keep a plant there for them as well as hopefully helping out the people in their area as well. We have, uh, fifteen plants as of right now op- in operation, uh, in the tidewater in eastern, uh, North Carolina. And, uh, we do anything from warehouses to patios to whatever you need. We, we can furnish it. So, uh, my thing is, all we're trying to do is move forward, help Microsoft as well as anybody else that comes up and needs the, um, product. And we have, uh, as far as, uh, water control and stuff like this, uh, we have a, uh, a person that is hired, environmental company that is hired by us, that's, uh, is our babysitter. They come prior, real often, uh, Sarah is with Bay Mc- Environment and she comes by at least once a month just to check us, to make sure we're doing what she said, told us to do and what the environment needs for us to do. So, uh, we try to be a good steward as far as the environment. Used to be, it was just kind of throw it up and run with it, but not anymore. It's not like that anymore. We have to control the dust when we're loading. We have to control the dust when we come in. We have to control the water. Any runoff at all that we have runoff has to be contained. We cannot let anything come off that plant. Uh, that's why we don't try to use much concrete on a plant. We use porous surfaces so it evaporate the water. Uh, cause if not, we have to, even rainwater, we have, if it hits concrete, we have to hold it and be treated before we can release it. So, and if y'all have any questions, I'd be able to answer any questions y'all have.
How many trucks y'all run off of that plant?
Uh, six.
Six, okay.
Because, and that's the other reason, we're close. And of course, the further you get away, the more trucks it takes, the more trucks you put on the, on the road. And of course, the more it costs to do it. So we try to keep the plants as close to the project as possible to cut back on traffic as well as usage. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is David Height.
They, they pretty much covered everything, so I would like to make a statement.
Okay. All right, next is Ellen C. Walter? Walker?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ellen Walker, I live at one thirty-seven Hall Street, Boynton, Virginia. Two, three, nine, one, seven. We, and I've been a nurse for over forty years and I'm very concerned about the dust. And things that will come into the air as people get older. They develop asthma, COPD, all kinds of things from these, uh, they can't even be out to cut the grass. It's very important that the, that this plant, if it gets approved, realizes that. And my second point is, it may, that road ninety-two may be structured, you, you, you got the, uh, people. Who have the dump trucks and stuff, but it's still a two lane road. I haven't heard anything about what they're gonna do about the road. And that road is busy because Microsoft used the road, their workers, their trucks, that those cement trucks and all kinds of things use ninety-two. So coming from where I live, crossing fifty-eight, going down ninety-two, that's gonna be a headache. Because it's got to have some kind of way that people can use that ninety-two without having to, uh, worry about, uh, getting on the road, getting off the road. When I go to visit my daughter, can I get off the road in a timely manner? Can I even drive the road in a timely manner? Is it gonna take me more time to get from Boynton to Chase City? Is, is, is that gonna happen if they don't do something with the road? The road has to be somewhere, it looks to be extended some kind of way wide and to per, uh, for the trucks to, to be on the road. Cause those are big trucks, they're not, you know, four by fours or whatever, they're big trucks. But I am concerned about the air quality, uh, the water quality, cause these people, the people who live on there have wells. And I am concerned about the road, uh, if, whether they're gonna extend the road or they're gonna leave the road like it is. Thank you.
Thank you. So much.
Next up is Ann Sneed.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I live at two, seven, eight, two, Highway ninety-two, Boynton, so I am one of the ones that is going to be affected. I guess the first thing that I was, um, I was very confused when I didn't even get paperwork. That said that this was coming, I received nothing. The only way I found out was because my neighbor, her daughter contacted me to see if I had got a letter. I didn't know what was going on.
Let me, let me say one thing to that. Does your property join?
I am named Anne Richardson on the property.
So I mean, yours joins their property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Did, did we not get her a letter?
We go by what's on the tax card card, so whatever's written on the tax card card is what we sent out.
Kyle, we got both, we got both sides, we got the left and right across the road, they have a head.
Nor- normally how it goes, now I don't know who's on your tax card, I don't know all those.
It's me.
But, uh, normally how it goes is the adjoining landowners get the letter. In other words, if you, you're, you're several properties down, you wouldn't get one. But in your case, I don't know exactly what happened, but, uh, we.
And it's the same address, so the name is changed, but the person is still the same. And I didn't get one, so.
Right. You should, you should have gotten one if you, if, if.
Well, that's what everybody told me, I should have gotten one, but I didn't. It's the mail, it could be whatever. Um, but the other thing is, I have multiple health issues. Multiple health issues. So there are things that I just don't need. I don't need the air quality, because I hear them say that they're gonna take care of it monthly or yearly. But what happens in between those times when it's the middle of the month and something happens? What happens when yearly, if it's yearly, and six months in, something happens? I'm just concerned health-wise as far as for me. Also the traffic. We have enough traffic going on with Microsoft workers going back and forth from ninety-two. I'm a principal of a, of a elementary school. I get out early in the morning and sometimes it's all I can do to get out on the road in order not to get hit. We have children that live next door who got, have to catch the bus. I'm concerned about all of those things. So I ask you to take all of these things into consideration when you do make the decision. Because, you know, we can say we're gonna do quality, we're gonna check this, we can check that, but we are human and we do make mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, I'm sorry you didn't receive a letter.
I'm here.
Next is Ronnie Sneed.
All right. Thank you.
Next is, uh, Danny Foye? Fox?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Pretty much, I'm gonna address everything that everybody's already covered. The traffic and the big truck traffic that's already occurring on ninety-two due to the landfill. The cement trucks just gonna increase it that much more. Maybe, maybe six trucks may not be that much, but if they're gonna be running as much concrete, hopefully as this gentleman hopes to, he's gonna run. It's gonna be a lot of coming and going right there. It's already a bad spot right on that knoll to begin with. In addition to the, to the noise quality. I know I, I know I own property on, across through the woods there, but I still am concerned about that as well as the tax value. But the, the traffic, it's already, as this lady said, but Miss, Miss Sneed said, it's already a barrier in the mornings and in the afternoons. Especially with the buses running up and down the road and they're gonna be stopping there, cause I've seen kids get on there as well. Just appreciate y'all's time and hope y'all take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Next is Matthew Sandy.
How's everybody?
All right, sir.
Yeah, my name is Matthew Sandy, I live at thirty-eight ninety-nine, Highway ninety-two, just down the road from this site. I've been a lifelong residence in the area. My family's own family farm there since the late nineteen, eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. As you know, everything's increased around here, everyone hit the note, hit, head on the nail about all the traffic. I have two young children, it gets on the bus in the area there. It's already a bad issue, it's been multiple fatalities on that stretch of road from my house down to where the site is. The actual traffic's just not gonna be good. You know, it's environmental concerns, but they addressed those, I know they have things to mitigate that, but those are concerns with anything you bring in. Other thing, the, one of the big things other than the safety issue is the noise. I'm sorry, there's, if you've done anything on a farm or construction equipment, a, a cement truck makes a lot of noise from the, the, um, the ramp dropping, cleaning them off, just the engine noises, and you're talking a hundred and fifty feet, two hundred and fifty feet from these people's houses? It's not gonna affect me as much, but that's, that's a lot of noise that someone's gonna have to be deal with. Not everyone works from eight to five, they work night shifts, including myself, I have a rotating shift. That's an issue as well. Another thing, if I could, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're moving a plant from Microsoft that they already have access to in a place that's industrial already. To move it to a residential area or agriculture area, just because it's more convenient for the company. Um, or something that should be taken into consideration, it's not benefiting the community in another way, other than maybe someone getting some concrete. But we do have other concrete plants in the area. Hope y'all take everything into consideration on your decision, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next is Ann Leon.
Hi, I'm Ann, um, I live on, uh, twelve thirty-seven Highway ninety-two, it's a little ways away from it. Um, I'm like everyone else, concerned about the traffic. And it is bad on ninety-two, especially with these big equipment coming up and down the road. And, um, I certainly, if I lived in one of those houses, I'd be really upset. But, um, I'm a little further away, but, uh, uh, I would certainly not blame them for being upset about that. It's noisy, the traffic, um, dangerous, um, I, I think they could pick a better spot. A commercial area, maybe not a, you know, turning, if you, you buy a house next to a farm, you don't want it to change into a cement factory, so. Anyway, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Next up is Angela Bacon.
Good evening, my name is Angela Bacon, I also represent Bluestone Group. And my property is directly behind the proposed rezoning. And I'm here tonight to respectfully ask that you all deny this request. This land is currently zoned agriculture, which fits the surrounding homes and farms. Changing it to industrial for a concrete batch plan is simply not comparable with this community. It would represent spot zoning benefiting one business while permanently changing the character of our rural neighborhood. A concrete plant brings serious impacts. The con- the constant noise from machinery, trucks, the dust that carries the silica particles into the air. And the heavy truck traffic on roads not designed for industrial use will directly affect the health, the safety, and the quality of life of families who live there. These impacts will also lower property values for every homeowner in the area. This, there are also environmental concerns, runoff from the concrete operations can pollute our groundwater and our farmland. While dust can harm our crops, livestock, and wildlife. This rezoning sets a dangerous precedent. Once agriculture land is open to industrial, it's almost impossible to turn it back. I want to be clear, I'm not against growth, I'm not against businesses like concrete plants, but they belong in areas already zoned for industrial. Near highways and business parks, not in the middle of our residential and our agricultural community. Please protect the integrity of our land use plan, our property values, and our quality of life. On behalf of myself, my neighbors, I respectfully urge you to deny this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Cecil Crutchfield.
Half of ninety-two from fifty-eight is?
Good afternoon.
Two or three miles.
My name is Cecil Crutchfield.
Toward Chase City?
Yes. But the young lady just said, you'll get to my house before you get to hers, and it's a danger of it. I can't have sleep now with the traffic on the road. And I know if that truck come, come in there, and at my age, I want to be able to sleep at night. And I know there'll be a whole lot of noise, and I hope all of y'all will take in consideration what have been said and do something about it. So thank y'all.
Thank you.
Barbara Finley?
Good evening, everyone. I am Barbara Finley, and I live at twenty-seven forty, Highway ninety-two. And this zoning that he wants to change is directly behind my house. And we have had a nice and quiet neighborhood and we would like to keep it like that. And as they said, it's a lot of traffic. I have asked VDOT to come out and, you know, search, see if they changed the speed limit out there. Nothing have been done yet. So I would like for you all, if you can, not pass this zoning to industrial and keep it as agricultural. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next one, um, I'll be honest, I'd. Okay.
Need to print them, don't they?
Could you state your name for us, please?
Dee Johnson.
Eric.
Yeah, Derek, yeah.
Okay.
To Mr. Height, um, the dock spot is what you rezoned? The dock spot on, on, on the map right there, that's what you rezoned? Okay, where, where you rezoning it at? Everything in front of it has been cut. All the timber is behind it, there's no houses behind there. Everything is in front of y'all, the concrete plant, if you put it right there, everything is in front, the timber been sold, cut and sold. You know what I'm saying? And the vegetation is there, it's just underbrushed. You know, so if you put it there, it's, what you got behind you is, uh, Ms. Margaret Alwood's old place. And it's, it's a long ways to that house, you know, it's about almost a quarter of a mile. But where you putting it at, in front, the, the, the timber has been cut and ain't nothing but small vegetation. So once the trucks start coming in, the, you know, dust rising, whichever, whichever way the wind blows, that's where the dust going.
Could, could you please address that?
Yeah. Okay, my, my bad. Yeah. Okay, um.
Appreciate it.
On the map right here, um, where he's trying to rezone?
Turn around and end with strike.
Um, everything that he's rezoning right here, right there, uh, all the trees been cut in front of him, the houses is right here. You understand, the houses is not on this side, it's right there where, where the timber been cut at. Okay, so there's no buffer there right now, number underbrush, so honeysuckles and stuff like that, what, briars and stuff like that. There's nothing there, you know? And also, we come in and put the plant, I, I doubt they'll plant trees back in front of it. The trees is behind it, you know, that they planted trees behind it on the other partial. Okay, just so y'all know, you know, what you're looking at, okay?
Thank you, appreciate it.
And the next one, next person to speak, um, they wrote in cursive, and I'm not.
Sam Lada, lucky so we can all hear it.
Pretty today.
I can't make.
Think you need to print your names for them all. They had to sign in, they need to print it. What is your name?
Yeah.
Quincy Pettis.
That's not.
Come on down, please.
We gonna change that, we gonna change that. Don't go signing in, pretty as saying, uh, I live right there, like thirty-one, like three one one six, Highway ninety-two, Boynton, Virginia. I live farther off the road from Ms. Barbara and Ms. Cecil made them. But the property they talk about putting the cement plant, my land come around on the backside of it. You know, like they right here, grew up the road, I live back in the woods. Illustrate on the map.
What's this there laying right here, right, this Cecil made it, right?
Are you, are you behind the pink?
Yeah, right, oh, it's behind it, right?
Yeah, where, the pink is where they gonna put the plant?
Okay, that's right, it's this Cecil made laying right here, and I want to say it's two hundred, two hundred yards, and this is, uh, this Barbara, yes, uh, well. Right here, where they at? My land is coming. Yeah, connecting, coming right over there, right behind.
I got, I understand.
It's a big valley and there's all the noise just happening there, it'll come right down that drain. You know, and I got two springs on my yard, you know, on my land, and I don't want not to just, you know, interrupt, I only live. You know, all that noise, they say you one thing, you gonna do this time, what time then, and that thing, it's nine, ten o'clock or nothing.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying, so it don't make, I just, um, I don't that properly for myself, not for nobody else to put, put down what they wanna ground me so I can hear them, you know? It just don't, you know, how you gonna take agriculture and make an induction? On ninety-two, they ain't not gonna back and forth, back and forth. Then they put strips in the road, keeping us out, you know, but all that. They're going to there so they can keep them in the road, people running ninety, seventy miles out, all the way to the market shop. I don't see them have cotton where they have, they have some chickens, I don't see nothing on that road. So what I'm saying, it look like everybody gonna have their way, just like fifty-eight. Look how many tapas do we got, even on ninety-two. That's why they put the rubber strips in the road, so they keep you on the, keep you on that side of the road so you can't get too much. You got that, race to get out in the road, can't.
All right.
But thank y'all.
Thank you, buddy, appreciate it.
I don't blame it.
Chan Schultz?
Don't blame him a bit.
John?
Thomas?
That's my problem. What's the name?
I think we're gonna have to get everybody to print their name. So, so what is your name, sir?
All right, I'm Tom Schluter. I live at twenty three seventy six Highway ninety two. I'm just, just past it, coming toward Boyden. Mike, I have a couple of concerns. Everything they've addressed is part of my concerns. Water is a concern because I'm on a well. My horses are a concern. The dust particles don't care where they go, but the wind blows from Chase City toward Boyden. And my property is right past where they're gonna be putting this. And I have those nice open green fields, while there, you get a nice coating of that silica dust and everything. It will basically destroy my horses. You know, I only have two, but it will definitely cause problems with them. And the air quality will also cause issues with them, and they could suffer with equine asthma, all kinds of stuff. And that is one thing I, somebody did bring up about animals. I happen to have animals that are out there every day feeding on the grass. And last thing I want them to do is to start eating silica dust. And there is a study that was done that recommends that you water your grass down if that's the case, if you're near plants. Well, I can't water four acres of land to keep them fed like that. So, that is, and air quality is another, and traffic, definitely. Because I have a blind driveway right there, so I have to listen for cars coming down the road. And I can hide rigs coming down through that little dip. So, if there's trucks going in there in the morning, I pull out to go to work. Couple times, you gotta, once you go, you gotta go, you can't stop. And that is another concern with the added traffic. Because right now, it's, it's gotten very busy on ninety two.
Right.
So, but that's my health, my concerns, water, the quality, because I drink out of a well, my animals, and my own health, too, the breathing, and that, the wind blows to my property. So, but thank you for your time, and I would request that you guys deny this change for our local area. So, we do have a good community. I'd like to keep it that way.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker.
All right. All right. Any discussion?
Maybe Josh and Lucky can help me with this. We, we not too long, we did a new comprehensive plan. Was this area, was, was this area designated kind of, you know, we kind of designated to keep some places rural, some agriculture, some, uh, industrial, was this, do you remember this area?
Mr. Bradley, I may be, I may be making these things correct, but I'm pretty sure that in that cop land, it was more towards the town of Chase City for the industrial with the new Microsoft coming right there, then six eighty eight. I can't remember anything off the top of my head for that corridor of Highway ninety two from six sixty to Hunter's Lake. I can't remember anything.
Right. I know it's already a lot of traffic there with the, the landfill and Microsoft.
I think the only thing that was in that top land was the restoration of Old Cox, that small section in that area.
Right.
Yeah, I noticed a lot of traffic with the landfill and, and Microsoft there as it is.
Yeah, yeah, big trucks, too.
They changed that intersection there, not too far from there as it is.
You know, I don't, I don't have a lot of problems with the cement plant being built or whatever, but I, I, I don't know if this is the right spot.
I, I agree.
I agree. I feel like we could find a little bit more suitable place.
It's gonna interfere with a lot of people.
Okay.
Any...
Concerning the truck traffic, if he's got his plant already, I'm assuming it's right there off Old Cox ninety two? Is that the area that the plant's at now?
No, it's in Microsoft itself, isn't it?
But I mean, that's...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's where it's at now, like I'm assuming?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right. But if he's gonna supply Chase City for concrete, those six trucks are gonna be on the road anyway. It's just fact of how far up the road you want them to go.
Right.
I mean, I, I can get to a lot of the concerns that everybody has. But far as those concrete trucks gonna be on the road, if, if he go haul concrete to Microsoft and Chase City, he's gonna be on the road regardless of the way his plan is.
Traffic's gonna be there regardless, the traffic part of it.
It may not be delivered to Microsoft here, but to Microsoft in Chase City.
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
I said, we got, we understand those concerns. I'm, I'm just addressing that actual traffic on ninety two with the trucks. But that's, that's just my two cents as far as traffic goes.
Um, this is sixty... This is in District Seven. Do I hear a, a motion on this application?
I make a motion to deny the request due to the concerns that have been expressed here tonight.
Okay. Um, is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been made, a second? We probably ought to do a roll call. We probably ought to do a roll call.
Just a second.
Okay. Whenever you're ready. Make it clear to the board, yes for the motion and no. Yeah. Yes is for the motion, no is for against the motion.
Right.
Just so everybody knows. Just start at the top of this and go there.
Mr. Ramey.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowder?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Crump?
Yes.
Mr. Brinkley?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mrs. Webster?
Miss Webster?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Arrington?
Yes.
All right, that's a motion carried, uh, will be denied. Please, please. Please.
Don't need that.
Um, next item on our agenda tonight, the Metro County Zoning Office has received an application by Holly Gill and James LeBovick. Sorry if I killed your name, the Gill Family Trust for a special exception permit to allow a veterinarian dog and cat clinic. Uh, this property is zoned residential and is located on the north side of Highway fifty eight. And, and it is approximately two tenths of a mile west of its intersection with Route six seventy seven, Wilkerson Road. This is in Alachia District Eight. Is the applicant here to speak for this?
Yes.
Application.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Holly Gill, and I've been a veterinarian in Virginia since nineteen eighty three. For the last three years, I've been a volunteer at the Lake Country SPCA. We actually built a surgical suite there from one of their cat rooms and got it licensed, and I've been performing all of their spays and neuters for their in-house pets for the last three years. Uh, my husband and I recently moved to Clarksville, and I wanted to be able to extend my services to the companion animals in, in their families. So, I have had the, uh, the structure, it's a, it's a house right next to a, a car repair shop. But it is a little house, and it still looks like a little house. And I was able to get it licensed by the State of Virginia Board of Veterinary Medicine as a, as, as a facility to do surgery in. I want to make it clear, because the way it, it sounds, it sounds like it's gonna be a regular animal hospital. But that's really not what my intentions are. It's gonna be a surgical, uh, a surgical service. The only patients that I will be, uh, give, treating or doing anything for will be animals that are there to be either spayed or neutered. In, um, that some people don't realize, but cats can actually have four litters a year. If each cat has four litters a year, one female unspayed cat can produce at least twenty kittens. And that is just, how can anybody have twenty kittens? You know, and, and so I wanted to, to focus on just that. I don't wanna, I don't, I'm not gonna give any vaccines, I'm, people aren't just gonna be coming and going. The facility has a, it's actually a bedroom that will be surgical prep. We will prepare them for surgery, induce their anesthesia there. And then, the other bedroom is, is fitted out as a surgery suite, and it'll be exclusively used for surgery. There's no exam rooms or anything like that for me to be taking walk-in patients. Everybody will have appointments ahead of time, and I'm the only surgeon. And we're planning on only being open three days a week from eight, eight in the morning to three in the afternoon.
To what in afternoon?
Three.
Three, eight to three.
Excuse me just one second.
Yeah.
I have a question. Didn't we hear the same application?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was for the reset. That was for the rezon.
Yes.
Right.
And this is for the clinic itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
That's probably it's...
I just wanna make sure we all...
Heard all this before. Okay, well, I thought y'all looked familiar, so, anyway, so...
I, I, I was, I was beginning to get deja vu there for a minute, I'm sorry.
The, um, what a, the traditional spay-neuter clinic is owners just come in, they leave the pet, they go away. When they're, when they're ready to go home, I give them a call, or the staff does, and then they just come, and we bring the cat out to them, and they go home. So, basically, it's not really gonna be a facility where clients are gonna come into. And at most, I can do six, maybe seven cats a day. So, the traffic won't be coming and going, and I, I think our parking lot is sufficient enough to handle, you know, four or five cars. The, um, my, uh, Southern Animal Care is a five oh one C three corporation as, uh, as, I'm sorry. Registered with the IRS as well as the State of Virginia Corporation Commission. And again, this is a not-for-profit business, and I, I just really would like to be able to help the community, and that's, that's, you know, what, what I'm, I would like for y'all to help me do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
There were no, no one signed up to speak.
All right. All right. Um, is there any discussion? I know we talked, we passed the other part of it, no, no problem last time, and I don't see any real changes, other than she's just getting a special exception permit now. So, this is in Alachia District Eight? Do I hear a motion on this?
I make a motion to approve. The special exception would allow the applicant to operate a veterinarian dog and cat hospital on the property will not be detrimental to the public welfare and will not adversely affect the health or safety of persons or the neighborhood for the proposed use. Will provide an animal care business within the county that only has approval from the Virginia State Department of Health professions and the structures here will meet the required building code for this type of business. And I'll add, Ashley, she'll do something she likes to do.
All right, motion's been made. Is there a second? Mr. Watson? All right, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carriers. Approval of the minutes from...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
My motion been made to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carriers. Mr. Administrator, sir. Would that be you or Lucky? Who we going with tonight?
You're all.
Okay.
All right, for the month of June two thousand twenty five, the Metro County Zoning Office collected seven thousand one hundred and forty dollars. And the building report, the, in June two thousand twenty five, the Dog Inspector's Office took in seven thousand eight hundred and ninety nine... Hold, hold, that's wrong. Nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, twenty four cents. Because that says seven million, that kinda scared me.
Yeah.
For the month of July two thousand twenty five, Metro County Zoning Office accepted ninety seven hundred and sixty five dollars. And for the month of July two thousand twenty five, the Dog Inspector's Office took twenty thousand three hundred and fifty eight dollars and that hundred. Yeah, because this says that they will set up making twenty thousand, it says make twenty billion.
Okay.
So...
All right.
Mr. Towns, don't they usually, uh, Assistant Secretary usually provides everybody with those papers? A sheet, just like you've read?
Yes, sir.
Would y'all, would y'all consider doing that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
It's in, it's in...
It's in here.
It's in...
Oh, it's, it's on the tablet. My mistake.
Should be in the past.
It's in the past.
It's on the tablet, my mistake.
Everything's there. Both of them.
Yeah. All right, is that everything?
Is everything?
Um, just so y'all know, you will have a meeting next month?
We'll have one?
Yes. Um, also, uh, the agreement you guys have...
Lucky, you want it over Finney Wood, or you want me to do it?
I can do it. So, uh, Finney Wood Solar is coming in for a special exception.
They turned in their special...
They turned in their special exception. This will be, they're planning on going in December, so we've got a little bit of time. But it's a nine hundred and ninety seven acre...
Site.
Site, but they're only gonna use about four hundred and ninety seven acres. So, just, uh, just some food for thought, you know?
And that, what district?
That's gonna be in...
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah, yeah, the district.
Okay. So, that's, did we go hear that next month?
No, that's coming in December.
See, they won't, Mr. Bradley, they wanted to have that at the September Plan and Commission meeting, and they did not turn their application in till today. Lucky and I had read over the site agreement and didn't have any comment, and they never applied for the special exception permit. So, talked off of them this morning, and they got everything to us this afternoon, and then sent myself a letter around two o'clock this afternoon that they were gonna, um, go to their hearing in December twenty twenty five.
Okay, okay. And this is the same one that was kind of...
Yes, sir.
They just downscaled.
Yeah, and it works on the floor.
It's right on, it's right on Shaw County line. That they wouldn't have done the nine, they couldn't do the nine hundred because the rest of it was in Shaw County. So, it will all be in that.
I think it's the same one we passed at twenty six thirty.
You passed at twenty two thirty.
Yeah, we already done that.
Right.
And they kind of doing like the last one, the, they, they come in with the final last minute.
Okay. Was there anything else? I just have a small announcement. I'll be stepping down as chairman. And, uh, next meeting, y'all will have to vote in a new chairman. So, I've enjoyed working with you all, and appreciate it. Do I hear a motion, we adjourn?
Show move.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye. We're motion.
Yep, that's good.